Where'd you get that town charge when it came back?
I got all the subgroups and I guess I'm, we got down to the shopping center. We, it's a deep Wednesday, I got a real problem.
All right, call the order for the zoning board appeals July 10th, 2024 meeting. And we have roll call, please. Derschak, here.
Blue.
Here.
Oglen.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Smith. Absence. Swanson, absence. Thank you.
Need a motion to approve the minutes from the May 18th, 20, or May 8th, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion for the village, second by me, uh, Derschak.
Yes.
Lutich.
Yes.
Oglen.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Business, uh, number two in the agenda, ZBA 2024 dash 004 Public Hearing for Text Amendment. Revising the Village of Roscoe zoning ordinance section 15 dash 410. Governing residential zoning district development standards. I guess I guess you are going to give a presentation?
Uh, yes, yes, absolutely. I'll, I'll walk everyone through the couple of agenda items that we have tonight. Uh, good evening, board members. It's been a while since we've last seen one another. Hope you're all well. Um, so, uh, real quick, before we dive into the details of, uh, the first item on the agenda, I'll just give a brief overview of, uh, what the ZBA, uh, has to do tonight according to code. Uh, section 15, 779, uh, provides all of the guidance related to, uh, potential zoning code text amendments. Uh, and so after reviewing and considering the two before you tonight, uh, the board should come away with, uh, one of the following findings for each proposed ordinance amendment. That would be recommending the proposed amendments be adopted as presented, recommending that they be, uh, amended, uh, in a modified form, or recommending that the proposed amendments be rejected. Um, ultimately, the concurrent vote of four members of the board are going to be required, uh, in order for the application for the text amendment to then be transmitted on to the village board for final review and a final decision, uh, on their part. Uh, so if you direct your attention to the second page, uh, of our, uh, first agenda item, uh, I have each of the relevant sections of the zoning code, uh, provided as well as, uh, any changes or omissions, uh, required based on our proposed amendments, uh, outlined in red. Uh, so the first item before us is related to residential driveway width standards. Uh, as you're aware from previous discussion, um, or in the midst of considering some potential changes to the residential driveway standards to allow for additional flexibility for driveway widths on residential lots that are exceeding, uh, kind of the standard two-car garage as there are many within the community that are larger than, uh, that. Uh, so the changes proposed below are, um, intended to provide a little bit more flexibility without, uh, well, ba- uh, striking a balance between, uh, maintaining ultimately our, our existing 24-foot width at the property line, uh, but again, providing some additional opportunity for people to be able to maneuver vehicles in and out of their driveway. Uh, so the section that we're looking at is section 15, uh, dash 410B6, which is residential driveway standards, uh, and as you can see, uh, the proposed text amendment is to make some changes to subseat, uh, which would ultimately allow for, uh, a relatively minor change that would add, uh, an additional five feet of length, uh, for people to maneuver vehicles before, uh, tapering back to the maximum driveway width of 24 feet that has been established by the existing code. Uh, so while it might not seem like a major addition, uh, it's going to provide an additional five feet of space, uh, within which to maneuver vehicles, uh, and that space has ultimately been taken from, uh, what could used to have, uh, and s- and altered slightly. So it used to be that, um, there was a space of 20 feet that was allowed to extend at the width of, uh, anything beyond the, uh, that 24-foot maximum to accommodate the full width of a larger-sized garage bay. Uh, and then within 20 feet, uh, begin a taper that would ultimately, within 10 feet, uh, reach that maximum width of 24 feet, if that makes sense. And so the proposed change is to extend the full area that can be of a larger area by an additional five feet and then, uh, essentially take that from the 10-foot taper that was, uh, previously allowed and it will now be a bit more of a dramatic taper over five feet instead of 10 feet. Uh, but again, the intent, uh, of which is to provide people with a larger area of wide driveway width within which to maneuver vehicles. Uh, and then again, come down to that 24-foot area. Uh, so if you have any questions, please let me know, uh, otherwise I'm here to clarify, uh, as you discussed.
Where did this, uh, amended text come from? Was that something you guys created in the last meeting? Or does that follow a different example?
Uh, yeah, Joe, oh, sorry, Joe.
Go ahead.
So, okay, uh, we looked at a couple of different things, uh, and from conversation that happened at the board level, uh, Joe and Brandon and I, uh, discussed and ultimately came up with this as a potential solution. Obviously, I'm here for your review and any changes that you made.
This was brought before the, uh, the village board had some discussion with it, uh, when we had the variants come through. And this was fun to meet that intention we're looking at. So keeping the, the width of the, uh, the right way that were the same, but allowing some additional room up close to the garages.
With changing the setback from the right away from 10 to 5, uh, if you have like a culvert or anything, you know, is that tape, is that going to affect the cul, you know, the culvert? Is that, you know, you know, right now you got the culvert set with the up to 24 feet? And then if you add that taper in closer, is that going to affect anything?
This just starts with the taper starts. So the actual width at the right-of-way line essentially is going to be the same. Not talking about change at all. It's just the, when do you start to start tapering it? Yeah, so this shouldn't change that at all.
Is there a diagram?
Uh, no, there's no, it's the same, it's essentially the same diagram we have currently. It's just instead of going from five feet to the right-of-way line, it's going to, or it's time to be right-of-way line for that taper to end, it's five feet from the right-of-way line to the right of the shed. So it just says a little more, or a sharper taper.
So the taper won't be coming in on top of the culvert?
No, no. Yeah, it still has some bits for me for the maximum.
Just out of curiosity, can that taper be split between the left and right side of the driveway? Or just like all have to be on one side?
As written.
Yeah.
As long as it does taper.
Yeah, uh, that would be my understanding and we could, we could add language to clarify that. Uh, but as of right now, I think that's left a bit unambiguous or ambiguous, rather.
It's all based on, it's coming from the whole with the garage. So I suppose it depends on what side the garage is on and depends on, I mean, that's, that's really what it's going to come down to.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, it's, I understand what you're saying, but I think it's going to matter on the actual house itself.
Right.
I think it's going to always have to, I mean, yeah, I hear you're saying it could be either way, but I think it's going to sort of automatically do that just because of how the garage is set up. Cause it's going to come from the garage portion of it. So left or right, it's going to end up at your property line. Now, the requirements are still there. So you're still going to have the issues of, you know, setbacks from the neighbors. So I think it's that that's, I don't know if that's something you need to be, I mean, there we can address it if you'd like to, but I think that's going to be part of the flexibility of how it actually is designed.
I, I don't see any need to make any I think that if you wanted to split it on both sides.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, generally I have certain options anyway. Just, I mean, these are the maxims, but I think by the properties right now, as we're looking at them, don't even go out to these maximum distances. So I think that's just something we could see as well. So new driveways could go into this and have a wider, wider at the end, but.
So, uh, other questions from the board? Any discussion? This is a, uh, open public hearing, sir. Did you have something you wanted to address with this issue?
I guess, uh, that five, that five extra feet.
Introduce us.
I'm sorry. Andrew Applegate. 578 Valleymore.
What's your name?
This is a neighbor here. Valleymore. Um, this, what I, originally this was myself that brought this forward.
So I'll get your name, yes.
Public hearing, yeah. We get your name, please. We didn't catch it.
Andrew Applegate.
Okay.
Um, that additional five feet from the garage to the start of the taper would help tremendously. Um, however, when I do, not that I would park my RV at home all the time because that's really inconvenient. It's only there for a day or two as we're loading up to leave or coming home after to unload. Um, but there are several in the neighborhood that they would benefit from that do park their RVs there all the time. Um, there's one on Leanna that's a motorhome that's parked kind of behind, it's kind of wedged behind a pine tree and it sits there all year. Uh, they could benefit from allowing a, say a 29 or 30-foot wide uh, to be able to pull in and out without parking in the grass or under the tree. But that being said, I could live with that extra five feet as is with 24-foot wide of the at the culvert.
Good. And you, uh, members served me, were talking about having your driveway re-done?
If it's on the schedule for next month.
Okay. And so you can incorporate this new standard?
Yes.
Into it and, and this will be effective after the next village board meeting if they agree with it?
Yeah, it will always be at committee. So it probably will be in fact the second board meeting in August. So it'd be the 20, yes.
Send enough time?
August 20th would be.
That's only really for tear out and prep. Which would mean laying down the gravel and call it back to culvert. Cause right now my driveway is 16. It's not even the 24.
Well, I, I think.
So I do need to add some culvert.
If we did think it was going to get approved, we could probably do a quick variance request too, right? Other than that, it's long. There is, it's that possibly.
Could we skip committee? Do first and final?
Work and certainly plus that. For the, the village board, that's all I have.
Thanks.
Been done a lot.
I think motion to approve the amendment as recommended and as recommended.
I second.
Roll call?
So I see if there's any more hearing, public hearing people, I go for somebody.
Oh, uh, well, shoot.
So we're closing.
Yeah.
Cause we aren't meeting, it's a variant, it's, yeah, next month.
We're not necessarily close forward.
And then any more discussion with the board? Sorry, I forgot.
Second, second.
Motion by um, do you roll call? Uh, Derschak?
Yes.
Blue.
Yes.
Oglen?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so one, one or another, you open here. If you want to get a hold of us, um, you can call tomorrow, wherever, um, you guys call tomorrow, then we can let you have the time and everything.
Okay, number three on the ZBA 2024 dash 005 Public Hearing for a text amendment. Revising the Village of Roscoe zoning ordinance section 15 dash 516 governing the development of accessory buildings. And I guess I pose your up again.
Yes, sir. Uh, so, so the zoning code currently doesn't provide any guidelines with regard to, uh, material standards or requirements for accessory buildings and residentially zoned properties. Um, uh, I will say amongst many of the communities that we work in, there usually is something, uh, to ensure that any accessory structure in a neighborhood is going to be consistent with the character and the type of development quality, uh, that the rest of the principal structures maintain. Uh, so you know, you can't just throw up like a pole barn or something with like a rough, uh, sheet metal siding, uh, within, you know, a residential subdivision in the middle of town. Uh, so we intended to make some changes to the code to address that, uh, to ensure that, uh, specific types of materials are included to ensure that the development of any accessory structures uh, on residentially zoned property, uh, is going to be up to the standards, uh, desired within the village. So if you look at, uh, the second page for this item as well, uh, there are three sections within the code, uh, that will ultimately, uh, are, are being proposed to be amended. Um, the first has to do with, uh, general development standards for residential districts. Uh, as you see, adding, uh, under section 15 dash 410A, uh, a sub-three, which would basically reference, uh, the next section, which is where we would be adding some specific language, uh, ultimately kind of describing, uh, requirement that any accessory structure that is, uh, erected or developed on a lot that is zoned residential has to be visually compatible and harmoniously within the same kind of character, uh, of the general characteristics of the, the house on the site and the neighborhood around it in general. Uh, so looking at that section specifically, um, I've also supplied some permitted materials, uh, that are explicitly described within it to help further define the types of character that is acceptable within a residentially zoned district, uh, as well as a sub-two, which has some, uh, prohibited materials as well that are more suitable for, uh, structures that are erected in either commercial or primarily industrial zoning districts. And then the same can be said of the, the last section to be amended. Also, uh, just providing a reference to, uh, this section 15 dash 516 for accessory buildings, which provides these new clarified standards.
On the board?
Just saying that can go in Menards and buy one of the thousand-dollar metal and/or plastic sheds and put it on your. Mine?
Um, this is saying you can't, if there's that list of materials, it's just like, we actually, we've had a couple of these recently come through where it's mostly for the metal pole barn. We get people coming in with either like a natural just metal siding pole barn that comes in, um, more of an industrial barn, industrial shed, I suppose. That's what this is trying to address. Um, so the vast majority, I think probably all the rest when we've seen really coming through, the ones you see in Menards, you see generally, you know, selling, what they sell on those other lots, uh, like down on 251.
Okay.
Those are all fine. Those all generally match the, the type of, uh, residential shed to looking for. So if it's got siding on it, it's got, you know, wood on it, it's got, maybe that matches generally.
I was thinking, I was thinking of smaller sheds.
Yeah. Yeah, so those.
Something you could put a lawnmower in.
Yeah, this doesn't affect the size at all. This affects how the materials, how it looks. So, so yeah, this won't change any of those. The sizes won't change. This is, talks about materials.
But there again, those are not real elaborate. They don't, they're not built like a house.
Yeah, this isn't the building. This is just sort of what it looks like. So, um, it's like any of those sheds that you see, those different, general siding, those, anything like a normal, like a shed painted, you know, painted shed, that, that's all, that's all pretty good here. This is only for, um, concrete blocks. Maybe if you had concrete blocks, you can't handle those. It's restricted you having something like that. Um, you know, if like a pole barn, like that metal, just like those metal, they're very industrial looking ones. This permits those. Yeah. If you have specific ones you want us to look at, or if you have examples where you're concerned about, show us, but I guess.
The metal siding with seams being prohibited, I, I've seen some of those sheds that are like prefab, but that's what they are. And it specifically says metal siding with seams. Is that a problem with a prefab little?
Um, I guess I would just see what we're looking at. I guess I, without looking at it, I've not seen what the example is you're talking about. I, I just can't answer that without knowing what you're asking.
Smaller shed, someone would put maybe a, a grub, put a lawnmower and a fertilizer spreader in.
As long as it made, as long as it match, as long as it is made of these materials, then it's fine. If it's not, then it's, I guess it's not fine. If you have specific materials you want us to look at or you want to show us to make sure that it's in here, we'll, we'll look at those.
Well, the old.
If we lay this over, we can certainly do that.
The old ones used to be the more metal. I think most of them now are like, like rubber made.
We've seen a lot of those. Yeah, those are along here. We've seen many of those, um.
Rubber made one would be acceptable.
Yep. Yep. Examples I hear, yeah, like the chipboard ones or, you know, corrugated, just corrugated metal ones, um. Generally, anything metal siding is still, that's specifically called out here. So metal siding is fine. Uh, metal, you know, metal signs, aluminum siding, anything that was like a generally what you see out, out and about, like a house would be made of, that's, that's the type of materials that do be allowed on. But yeah, if you've got specific, you know, questions, specific materials you want us to look at, you bring those in and show us and before you guys can discuss that, we can lay it over if you'd like. You can add some more. This is your time to make those recommendations.
And I would think of the smaller.
Yeah, this is, this is, anything to do with the sizes, this is really the materials. So, yeah, but if you've got some specific materials you're concerned about, absolutely, we can lay it over, bring those in, we can make sure that it matches and the board has a chance to look at those and make that decision. It's absolutely something.
Uh, if, oh. Excuse me. If, if I may just add, sorry, uh, don't mean to cut anyone off. It's kind of hard to communicate via Zoom. Um, uh, just, uh, a consideration, um, I had added the sub-one and sub-two, the permitted materials and prohibitive materials, just to further clarify, uh, with explicit examples, say, okay, you know, what is this desired character? Um, cause otherwise that's, you know, completely ambiguous and, and sort of out for interpretation. Uh, so if the board would prefer, uh, you know, as Joe said, you know, now is your time or if you would like to review this at another meeting, uh, pick it back up another time. Certain materials could be struck from the list. Alternatively, um, the list could be even scrapped. So it, the language is purely saying, you know, the, the character of any accessory building, whether that's a small shed for a lawnmower or a garage, just has to be visually compatible with the principal building. Uh, but, uh, I personally, uh, just from a regulatory standpoint, would recommend that there are more specific materials or examples included within the code. Otherwise, uh, it, it does become pretty arbitrary and, and hard to regulate and administer.
Well, let me ask you this, uh, in the permitted materials, it says, um, seamless metal siding is permitted and then in the prohibited, it says metal siding with seams. So there, there must have been something specific in mind um, that differentiates the two. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, uh, then.
Talking about here and, and I have seen them, but.
Yes, absolutely. Um, generally the, the metal siding with seams is just, and again, this is not necessarily hair splitting, but, uh, just two different examples, uh, a, a seamed one is just a little rougher. That's usually going to generally be something that you'll see, uh, as Joe mentioned before, like on a pole barn, on something that's either going up in like an agriculturally zoned or, uh, like rural residential, uh, environment or on like an industrial property, uh, warehousing, just things of that nature, uh, which is just slightly different from a metal panel that is seamless, uh, something that is, uh, there's some that are a little more like architecturally or decoratively oriented that are just a little less rough, a little more suitable for some things, uh, as uh, has been mentioned, you know, a small shed for a backyard. Um, and while that might seem hair splitting, uh, it was just a, a difference that we wanted to put in here. Uh, because again, just small differences in character like that could eventually add up and, you know, make a difference in terms of the, the general appeal and character of a neighborhood. Um, again, if there's major concern with that, those could be stricken entirely, uh, or, you know, any recommendations that you may have, uh, can be considered and implemented.
Well, and doesn't this pertain to more to, uh, things where you have to have a permit for? Cause I mean, this, are people getting permits just when they go to Menards and pick up a small lawnmower shed? Really? Are they, do you, do you, I thought it had something to do more with if you're building something, if you have put in a foundation?
You know, they're coming for permits for, um.
Or any thing they buy at Menards, it's horrible that they could put in their yard.
Ones of those, yeah, we've got the square footage in here, but yeah, they're, they're coming in for those just for we know where the setbacks are. We'll give it to like a, I like the really small ones, which I think people, I don't think they call them like the ones by, by people's pools, right? You put your pool, I mean, and that's not coming in, those little small plastic ones, that type of thing. Those aren't coming in, they're a little small, maybe like, you know, five-foot-high ones that maybe just you put your lawnmower in. Those aren't coming in for permits usually. Um, it's more of the bigger outdoor shed.
Right.
Um, and I've got here too, I've got, this is seams. So that's what we're looking like, so more industrial, that's the seams when we're prohibiting versus, um, like a shed. So I mean, this is, so this would be a seamless one, right? So seamless is going to look more like a siding, right? Like you see in the house, that's, this is the seamless siding, um, versus the seams. So a seam looks like a pool barn, like you see an industrial, so that industrial siding, that's what we're talking about. That's what we're, we're having um, as part of that to the sides, the siding. Um, the seamless stuff, this is, you know, this is metal, like it looks like siding, right? Looks like normal siding, big house, that's what we, that's what we're allowing still. So it's just trying to make it, they're more residential in character versus like an industrial looking. Um, yeah, this is very nice. Really isn't a good example of it. This is, this is that seams siding that's being prohibited. And we have seen a few of these go up. Uh, there's a few of them in the village right now that we've seen go up and we've had a couple of requests come in, or you had a request and then really recently four one, like this for a larger one. We're trying to make it less, less industrial, less commercial, a little more residential.
I'm surprised there wasn't already something in place.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
After, but.
Yeah. And we don't usually get the requests for them, but we've had a few recently. We've had a few and there's actually, there's a couple already out there. We get, you know, some complaints from neighbors for saying, well, can this go up? Can this, you know, very, but they do look industrial. Like that one example just showed, they look very industrial and we had people, you know, in their backyard, uh, you know, yeah, they're in the setbacks, they're away from the, the sides by whatever it is, time to be almost fun, but neighbors, we've had complaints from neighbors on those. So we're trying to find a standard where we can say, yep, no, this has to be residential nature. It has to look like it belongs in the neighborhood, a residential neighborhood, um, not industrial. So. And we can absolutely, we can make, you know, make changes, we can add material list to it, we can subtract, we can make it more general, but. We do need something in place, so that's why we've shot this to the board, we need something in place that lets us make those determinations and. Deny those types of. Industrial looking. Siding.
You okay, George?
I understand.
I I think it's good to get something in place and that if it needs to be tweaked. Down the road.
Yeah. That's concerning, yeah. Yeah.
Well, and if there was something unforeseen where somebody wanted to come in and say, hey, well, this is what I'm gonna do. I'm not sure, I wanna make sure it's okay, you know, still. Look at if it had to be made a variance or whatever after that.
And say it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't prohibit those metal sides at all, it's just. Those industrial.
Okay, as a public hearing. It's open if anybody cares to speak. All right, we'll close the public hearing and final board discussion, anything?
I'm I'm happy, I I. It it sounds like a, it the. A rubber made building would be flat.
Correct. Correct, yeah.
You know, I'm planning on running off.
Like you, why, that'd be funny, we're going to, you'd be fine.
Over to your house, I can get it measured. All right, we'll kick the. Have a motion to approve that.
When I say so. I just thought of it.
I was. Welcome to public hearing again.
Just thinking on the shed deal.
Yeah.
Um the looks are subjective. The wording needs to be a little more specific. On whatever's being proposed.
That's just my opinion.
I think it's pretty specific.
That reliance is having was, yeah, it's very specific, so we're not doing a subjective, you know. And I've seen other ones, we've put other ones where it's, you know, it has to be the nature of the neighborhood or nature, you know, generally fit with the character of the neighborhood. We're not, that's not what we're proposing, whether with the the list that lies put together and I think it was going over, it's. These are the type of materials allowed, these types of materials are not allowed, so it's very, very objective, uh. Listing out the materials.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Public carriage closed again and.
Okay, sorry, motion second, a motion by. What's it by, wait?
George, yeah.
Second by. Dear stock?
Yes.
Bluech?
Yes.
Auckland? Need?
Yes.
Yes. All right, let me hold business for discussion. Uh public comment. Business, anybody? All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, uh roll call, at your stock?
Yes.
Bluech?
Yes.
Auckland?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
I'm waiting.
Yeah.
Guys, see you all of you.
Yes.